I call this meeting to order. Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed on June 13th, 2013. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter exec session to consider confidential matters pertaining to the employment or future employment of a particular person or persons, as well as matters pertaining to potential litigation.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to re-enter public session.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you.
Bless you.
I sneeze on the truth.
There are two modifications to the agenda that was published prior. The first is that a resolution was added. Debbie, can you help me out? Which resolution was added for the bond?
It was...
Twelve point seven?
Twelve point seven?
Mm-hmm. And the other resolution was, or the other change is a minor change in the wording of one of the...
Policy.
Policies.
Fifty-three hundred point sixty-five.
Yeah. And we'll mention that at that time in the agenda. So with those modifications, this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second is their discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I would like to mention that the board members-elect have joined us for this meeting at the front table, just to get used to what it feels like to sit up front. I believe that you're invited to participate in discussions and ask questions, but obviously you can't vote. I know. It's unfortunate that I sprang that on you now that you're up front, but...
I almost raised my hand before.
I know. I was trying to sit on my hands, not make motions. I go to so many meetings, I'm making motions all the time.
This is a test to see if you can sit through without voting. Yeah. All right. Pride.
Okay. Well, welcome students in the audience, too. I think I see a few. So we start each meeting, just taking a few moments to say what we're proud of here in Hyde Park, and it's, we can never say enough, but I'll just start with a few. Music in the parks. It has been many years since we have been able to have our music in the parks actually in the park. It has rained for several years on opening night. Six.
Six in a row.
Six years in a row. So I did attend Mills Mansion, the concert. We had our Havlin Middle School band students and our FDR students, and they were a little bit more spirited than general because it was a beautiful night. They were out, there was room to move, and just a packed house. So that was excellent to have that in the park as it's scheduled. This year, the first time in many, many years, Ralph R. Smith had a play. Teresa Gasparini, a parent volunteer, arranged the whole thing with much help from the staff as well and other parents, but Teresa Gasparini definitely took the lead role. I did send her a letter. It was a phenomenal little play, and we're happy to see that auditorium being used. So that was an excellent production.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure.
I was very impressed, I'm assuming it was Ms. Gasparini's idea, that there were seven Dorites.
Yes.
There were four scarecrows. There were, and they just walked in and out. One would say a line and walk off the stage, another one would take its place, and it was seamless. After the first one, you didn't even notice it. And what a wonderful way to get so many children to be a part of, you know, to be a, you know, a Dorothy, you know?
Yeah.
You know, normally, there's only one, but in this case, there were, there were many, and it worked. And I thought the, at least in the performance I saw, they had a group hug at the end of the thing around Ms. Gasparini.
Oh.
And she comes, well-recommended her father work at Violet Avenue, and of course, did the school musicals for three years, so there's a little family pride there, too.
Oh, great. Yeah, it was, it was so sweet. Violet Avenue had Heroes Day, and that is a tradition at Violet Avenue. Again, super well-attended, lots of parents. The students do a phenomenal job. They each choose a hero that they, an American hero that they want to research. They dress in costume, they stand behind a music stand, and you can go push the button, and they go into character. I snapped a lot of photos. That was also the debut of our Facebook page. I'll talk about that in a minute. They were the first students to make it onto the Facebook page. But I talked to, oh, Michelle Obama, Betsy Ross, Abraham Lincoln, with a British accent, lots of athletic stars. It was just, it was great. So a great tradition and a good display of student research. We had the National Honor Arts Society induction, and that organization this past year was run by two parent volunteers, Myrna Haskell and... My apologies, it's right on the tip of my tongue, and she had laryngitis that night. But anyway, again, thanks to the two parent volunteers, and that was a very lovely evening. We also had the Athletic Hall of Fame. That's the athletic banquet for seniors. There were probably close to 300 people in attendance. An alumni of FDR who has had an extraordinary athletic career was the keynote speaker. He got his undergraduate and graduate from Princeton, and he did a fantastic job speaking to all our senior athletes. We had the senior award ceremony at FDR. That is just an unbelievable event on many accounts. One, to see how many people and organizations in our community contribute to scholarships and awards for our students in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So a great ceremony and just a real outpouring of seeing what the community does, both from the business perspective, and also, it's always a little bit of a very emotional event because there are a lot of memorial awards and scholarships where family members who have lost a loved one in the past, whether it was a teacher in the school district or a student in the school district, you know, set up a scholarship in their honor, and so a very moving ceremony. Winding down here. The, at the Havlin Middle School faculty meeting, we said goodbye to Steve Chaken, who has done an extraordinary job as an interim, got a standing ovation from the staff, and we welcomed Eric Shaw, because this was the last faculty meeting. And I know that we have lots and lots to be proud of. Oh, Operation Healthy North Park. I have to redo this. Every year, they do Operation Healthy North Park. I know that Central Office participates. We all get our Mini Coopers, and throughout the month of day, throughout the month of May, anybody in the district can fill out a Mini Cooper every time they exercise for 20 minutes or more throughout the month of May. So even Central Office, we all send in our cars, and they're all collected and tallied. And so this is a note from Margaret Roble to thank us all for the whole district for the support. They collected 3,829 co-op cars, and that equals 76,580 minutes of exercise, and this year's project far exceeded last year's total of 2,660. So, you know, picture of this year's project will be uploaded to the website. It's probably already there. This came in June 4th, so I'm sure it's already there. So congratulations to North Park, and I know that we look forward to it every year in sending in all our little cars, and we even encourage the office staff here, if they want to participate, to use their break or their lunchtime. So you'll frequently see in the month of May, a lot of employees out walking around, so... I don't, if anybody else, if I've missed anything?
Any further pride? Okay.
You haven't mentioned anything about graduation?
That's a whole agenda item.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
We're going to talk about graduation. That's one of the things. Let me see if that's the first one. Where am I? That's first on Superintendent's report.
Update on Capitol Project.
Okay. We did want to take this opportunity to update you on the Capitol Project. We made a commitment to do that on a regular basis. So Wayne is prepared. I don't know if everybody's had the chance to drive up there. It is moving along. We were behind schedule to start, and we are catching up rather quickly, and I'll let Wayne fill you in on that.
So there's some slides up here. I think it's just easier for me to present up here. So we're moving right along and on schedule, even with a shaky start at first. They've really worked hard to make up the time that was lost in the way beginning of the project. So with that being said, I just want to share with you some pictures, and you'll see Landscape Unlimited, who's our main contractor for the project, that, you know, it's really moving along, and I'll go into detail on each of them. But things like, the topsoil has been stripped and stockpiled, which basically means what you see there, all the old dirt has been removed and the new dirt put on, impacted, packeded, all the things that have to happen. Ninety-five percent of all the storm drains and catch basins have been installed. So if you go up there and you walk the site, you'll see those squares all over the place, and basically what's happening is they're diverting that into a retention pond and then out behind North Park's property.
You can't get a good test, yes?
Retention pond is at finish grade and stabilized with straw. Our drain for the retention pond is run through, like I said, the North Park Elementary School, and backfilled, and grass is being grown, and they paid very special attention to make sure they put good fences there, because the kids in North Park are out on the backfield there. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, if they were going close to that area, that they were responsible. There's a riprap, which has been installed, and an outlet of drain, but the wing wall still hasn't been installed. The practice soccer field is at subgrade, okay? And unstabilized with straw as well. The event area is stabilized with straw. Try to keep what they've completed, you know, safe, and then, just like when you do your lawn, put hay down, and it's all stabilized. The header drain for field is installed, and flat drains are ready to be rolled out this week. The cast is in place for the trench drain. That starts, actually started this week. And the end of next week, the field is scheduled to have all stone installed, which I was out there the other day, and it is. So that went really well. Hudson Valley Electric, that's the second contractor, they've removed all the light poles, and as you see... There's our light poles installed. And if you do get down there, they're humongous, just kind of standing underneath them. It's quite impressive. So they removed the light poles, installed their conduit under the field. Lights were delivered the week of 5/20. Holes were certainly drilled. Bases were set. Bases are installed, and concrete was poured, and they're there. The scoreboard, we're opening the bid for that tomorrow. So we've worked very closely with our athletics director to make sure we're getting exactly what is needed for the sports, and that's a... And then you see the picture of the drainage. That's how it'll run from the field into those catch basins and out way behind North Park. So that's good stuff. It's really amazing to see it being put together. The next piece of our Capitol Projects, I didn't want to not talk about that, because there's been tremendous progress done on our boiler systems. At Havlin Middle School, three boilers were removed and complete, and the new ones put in. Ralph R. Smith, two boilers complete. FDR, all boilers are removed. New boiler construction is right now in progress. As you see on the side of FDR, you'll see the old boilers there waiting to be taken away. Violet Avenue, the gas main is complete, and all the old boilers were removed. And HPE, the gas main is complete, and all boilers are removed. So starting with the next heating season, we'll see natural gas going into those two elementary schools, which is really great progress.
Thanks, Wayne. And you know what? I don't know if the board is aware, but I know we've talked about it at facilities, the 600-foot well?
The 600-foot well?
That they found at the...
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth...
Certainly. Part of the project, one of the alternates to the athletic facility is, was to put a well in so that to make sure that we can water, you know, the new fields that we're putting in. Otherwise, you know, you get the water once from the contractor, and then we're done, and we can't water it. So that was, you know, $25,000 add alternative. Well, a couple people that had a lot of history in the district came forward to us and mentioned to us that there was a well dug there years ago, and basically, they were going to move the high school onto some new property that was donated to the district, and that since had been abandoned. So we are currently in the process of looking at what we can do to revive the well that's already dug. So that's, it was really interesting to find out that there was a well that was already existence that nobody knew about, so...
Did you actually find it?
Yeah. Yeah, they found it.
Know where it is? Oh, that's good.
Yeah, they're testing it because the well that we were going to put in was, if we could have as the add alt, was not going to be anywhere near 600 feet deep. I mean, that was put in to make sure that the site that they were selecting for a brand-new high school would be, you know, acceptable.
98, I think that was.
98? So they're testing it right now, so we're hopeful that if everything goes well with that, we might be able to use that money for a different add alt. What's that?
Kevin was nodding, because it was when Gary Minz was here.
The middle school was going to be built in the wood line.
Okay.
That's what it was. Now I have to start all to come back now. I didn't know we said something well, that's cool.
I just want to, I'd be reminiscent, if I didn't extend thanks to the FDR staff and faculty who are really good about the work that's being done there. They've been really working together with us hand in hand. They even let us go there during testing, which was amazing. When I went out there to talk to the contractors, they told me we wasn't allowed to talk louder, but they really went above and beyond to make sure that noise levels were down. They did work on the far side, so a real big thanks to FDR administration, faculty staff, and everybody that's been so patient and accommodating during this, you know, phase of construction, but it's exciting, so thanks.
So next on the agenda is a report on the exit poll survey, but before I do the exit poll survey, I wanted to also do one other superintendent's report, and that is, we have signed a lease with the town of Hyde Park for one classroom at the front of Hyde Park Elementary to have the town recreation department have a senior citizen exercise space. I believe they're using it for exercise. So we're happy to be able to have them in there, and I think they should be in there pretty soon, if not already. But they're, again, they're going to be at the front of the building where Aviva's offices are, so as not to go to any expense by opening up the back of the building, because just to open the back of the building up just for one classroom is not, you know, cost-effective. And I'll do a rumor control. The auction house with Elvis and the cows and the pigs, they are not moving into Hyde Park Elementary. I did, apparently, that rumor is out there, and we did have some people who were concerned that we had rented out the building to the auction house and that Elvis would be outside of the building, but that is not true. So we did something new this year, an exit poll survey, and we wanted to take a few minutes tonight to share the results. This is the first time that I know of that Hyde Park has done an exit poll survey. I don't know if many, many, many years ago they have, but not to anyone's knowledge has this been done before. And I'd really like to thank Steve and the board members who, you know, we had kicked it around, and, you know, it stuck, and, and we definitely pulled it off, and it was really worthwhile. From very early on in the morning, we received positive feedback from people who were happy that we were asking them to take a minute or two. It was totally voluntary to fill out the exit poll survey, but people were in general pleased that they had the opportunity. The other thing that we found was that there were a number of people who were very willing to take the exit poll survey, and, but they weren't really clear about what an exit poll survey is, because the first question they would ask was, why do I have to tell you how I voted? Why am I telling you how I voted? I just voted. So people who are familiar with an exit poll survey know that, yes, that's the whole premise, to tell us how you voted, and then give us other pieces of information so that we can see any patterns or trends or correlations. But the only way to do those correlations is to know how they voted. So tonight, we're presenting the results. I know that, you know, there are some people, including myself, that are interested in sitting down and doing, you know, maybe some analysis of it. We have not had the time to really kind of take the data and maybe make some, come up with some themes or theses of why, what some of the data is telling us. So tonight, we're presenting the data, and I would like to thank the 300-plus people who did take the time to fill out the survey. We had 334 respondents, and this is a pie chart, breaking down the yes, no, and people who didn't answer. So we did have 10% of the people who filled out the survey that didn't tell us which way they voted. That's okay. We still get valuable information from them. But 64% of the people who took the time to fill out the survey were no votes, and 78%... Oh, I'm sorry, 19% were no votes that took the time, and 78% of the people that took the time to fill out the survey were yes votes. So that tells you something right there, you know, that they came in positive and were willing to spend a few extra minutes. There were two items to vote on, and one was the bus proposition, and again, a very similar spread, no surprises there with the yes and no. So there is a correlation between the people who voted yes on the budget, voted yes on the bus proposition, and took the time to fill out the survey. The same with the no votes. It was 19% and 20% for the no votes. One of the things that an exit poll survey can attempt to do is to find out if we're reaching all demographic people to come out and vote, and if we're reaching all the demographic or age brackets, how did they vote? And as you can see, it's a little far for me to see, we had 19 people in the 18 to 29 age bracket come out and vote, and they all voted yes. We should talk to our social studies department and give them the feedback. They do a major push at the high school to try and get our 18-year-olds out to vote, and I know that there's an enormous effort out there to get the returning college students, many of whom are home at the time of the vote, to come out. But we had 19 people in that age bracket, 58 people in the 30 to 44 age bracket, and again, the blue is the yes votes, the red is the no votes, and the orange is, they'd skip that question. And again, pretty steady there in the 30 to 61 to 70 group from, you know, 84 to 77, were yes votes in that age bracket, and a little bit of a trend in voting no. And this becomes interesting in another slide later on. A little bit of a trend in the age bracket in the no votes moving up a little. We have five townships that come out and vote, so we've, again, if we thought, if the data revealed to us that, you know, we just weren't getting anybody from Pleasant Valley, all 14 of them are 28 people or whatever it is that houses, and it's not Pleasant Valley, I think it's the Rhinebeck, we have 13 households or something like that. But if we weren't reaching any of them, then, you know, maybe you hit the pavement and do a little door-to-door. So part of why you collect the data is to say, is there something we can do better, either by demographics, by location? But as you can see, in Clinton, and again, you know, maybe it's worthwhile to go out, have a budget presentation at a firehouse in Clinton. But we had 34 people from Clinton come out, and you can see the percentage of yes and no votes. The Hyde Park township, 241 people, the bulk of our voters came from Hyde Park, which makes sense. Pleasant Valley, 13 voters. Poughkeepsie, 43. And again, you see their yes and no vote percentages. Another interesting question is to see if there's a correlation as to whether or not they are alumni. Did they graduate from the school district? And if so, if you were a graduate from the school district, how did you vote? And we had 92 people vote, who were graduates who voted, and you can see how they voted. And then we had 228 who were not graduates of the school district, and you can see how they voted. Interesting here that the percentage of yes and no votes is almost equal, whether you graduated from here or not. So that's important information. It shows that whether you graduated from here or you've moved into this community, you kind of have the same commitment to the district to at least come out and vote. So we appreciate that. This one's a little bit tricky in one regard, because the breakdown on the survey is, it's trying to ascertain what age level, if you have children in the district, what age level. But on the survey itself, it has, in case people didn't want to specify or they had more than one, and this may be a design that we change next year, but you could check, you had children, it said, "Check all that apply." So you had grades K through 3, and then you just simply had a yes elementary, and that's that primary one in the middle, or grades 4 through 8, 9 through 12, past high school age, or yes high school, yes elementary, or no children. So I think we may need to narrow that down and just stick to the age group, because I think it might have skewed things. But for the most part, you can see that the people with children in the district had a high percentage of yes votes. How would you grade the quality of education provided by the school district? So 60 people gave it an A, 145 people gave it a B, 72 gave it a C, 28 gave it a D, and nine gave it an F. I'm not surprised... And not surprising that the people who gave it the lower grades, we had a higher percentage of no votes. This, this was interesting, too. I voted yes because, and they were allowed to check all that apply. I support education, the budget meets the needs of my students, the spending or tax levy increase is reasonable. I'm surprised, you know, we did get forty-one percent of the people there. School tax increase is reasonable. And then other, and we, we have the fill-in-the-blank information there. But pretty much people were voting yes because they support education. Okay, I voted no. I, this was the most telling, and really was pleased to see that for our no voters, the people who took the time to fill it out, they, sixty-three percent of them said, "I support education, but can't afford the cost." And then, "School tax increase is not reasonable," and "The tax levy increase is not reasonable," and then some other, "And the budget does not meet the needs of the students," about seventeen percent. That was eleven people. So, again, some very telling information that we, we do have a number of no votes, that it's not because they don't support education. Do you agree with the district's decision to stay below the tax levy and knowing that there are some people that just really still don't know about or not interested in knowing about, we gave them that option? I didn't know there was a limit, but, so, a hun, is that fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so fifteen people didn't know there was a limit, but eighty percent of them voted yes. I disagree, they should have met or exceeded the limit. And again, that's interesting, twenty-seven percent. And on that one, I wonder if the wording of the question was difficult. Because basically, they, by twenty-seven people, ninety-six percent of them saying that, that's saying that we should have met. We were below, so they're saying we should have had higher taxes. And I'm, I'd be interested if, maybe that's really true. Maybe that, those people really felt we should have gone out and asked for more money. There was a no opinion, and, and I agree, just as simply I agree, that to go, stay below the tax levy limit. Two-hundred-and-twenty, that's the most significant part of the slide. Two-hundred-and-twenty-one people answered that they agreed that the district should have stayed below.
I don't understand in that slide how someone agrees with the statement that they should stay below the tax levy limit and votes against the tax, or against the, the budget.
Well, it could be someone who couldn't afford, I mean, they agree with the concept of staying below, but simply couldn't afford to support it anyway.
Don't worry, they didn't vote you.
Good interpretation.
Yeah, and, you know, that, that's part of where you roll up your sleeves and say, is there anything we can surmise from the data that's not speculation? And/or do we need to look at restructuring that question? Okay, this was, we had a whole host of options. And again, people could check all that apply. Where did they get their information about the district budget? Overwhelmingly, it was the budget newsletter, if I remember. And the website. Yeah, the, the, the district brochure, one, two, three, was eighty-five. School board meetings was ninety-one percent, and the district website was ninety-three percent. And the district newsletter, eighty-five. So, you know, we got some valuable information about what people are looking at and how they're accessing it. And some information about, you know, maybe what we're spending some time doing that really we're not yielding the results that we'd want to. Fifty-four, twenty-four people just skipped the question. But, let's see, a hundred and sixty-nine people said district newsletter, and a hundred and three said the local newspaper. Again, you can look at the numbers and the percentages. So, clearly, the greater number of people checked the district newsletter. This was an opportunity to say that, you know, as we move forward in, you know, in economic times, what do you, what non-mandated areas would you want to preserve? So, what, what do you value as a voter to preserve in order of preference if we had to start cutting into the non-mandated areas? Arts and co-curricular came out the highest. With a hundred and fifty-one with arts electives, extracurricular, a hundred and thirty, intrascholastic, a hundred and forty, classroom technology, a hundred and sixty-two, honors and other electives, a hundred and seventy-one, college and AP courses, two-hundred-and-two people weighed in on that one. So, again, this gives us some valuable information when it does come time to saying, what in economic difficult times are we going to throw our protective arms around based on this input? And hopefully, we would certainly seek other avenues of input and not have this as a sole source. Great to do an exit poll survey, but that was three-hundred-and-thirty-one. But three-hundred-and-thirty-one, very, very important and valuable voices we heard from, so, three-hundred-and-thirty-four, I'm sorry. And again, that's it. I think that, you know, this is gonna be, certainly, we have a budget input group. I think it's appropriate that we take this to the budget input group and have that be the vehicle where we roll up our sleeves and say, what does this data tell us about our budget, our budget process, our communication of the budget? And that will definitely be the first agenda item on our first big meeting.
One thing that I, I wanted to point out is that I noticed that the, there's a difference between the percentage of yes voters that took the poll as opposed to the number of yes voters we had. So, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I seem to recall that about sixty to sixty-five, sixty-six.
Yeah, and I was looking at the same thing. We had, I think we had about a sixty-five percent yes vote, so sixty-five, thirty-five percent no, where the exit poll results were nineteen to twenty-two percent no votes. So, I think that you're, it's a little skewed in the fact that people who voted no had a tendency not to take the exit poll, a greater percentage. So, it, you know, just something that to recognize and, and part of it. I think the other thing that I noticed was, in, in looking at your graphs, I might recommend you, you change your X and Y axis to the point where you're looking at, when you're looking at the, the graphic representation, you're looking at a percentage which isn't as easy to view as perhaps the numbers, you know?
Ironically, one of the early drafts of this represented by, represented these by absolute numbers instead of percentages.
Yeah.
And I found that harder to interpret.
See, my point would be, you would see, you could see impact, greater impact by the numbers, you know, the, the more people that chose that.
Yeah, one of the, one of the problems.
You gotta play with it. It's something you gotta play with.
Yeah, I think there's, there's multiple representations of each of these that, that can and should be done.
Yep.
I was particularly interested in this stuff, so I asked for a copy of the database, and so.
I was asking, I'm gonna ask for the same thing.
I stayed up way too late earlier this week and analyzed some of the data. And one of the interesting things that I was able to tease out of the data is that the newsletter is, in fact, our biggest source of information for the voters. But when you do that analysis by, by age, as, you know, is not gonna come to, as a surprise to anybody, the older you are, the more you depended on the newsletter. Whereas the website, the younger you are, the more likely you are to, to, to get your information from the website or word of mouth. Obviously, newspapers go in the same direction as the newsletter. So, there's a lot of, a lot of great information there. I think we should ask our math teachers to assign statistics projects based on this data.
I agree. That, that's, that's a great idea. Here's some, some real actual data that they can do all kinds of great graphing with.
Yeah, and interpret the data for us.
I've got our director of math and science behind us smiling, so, hey, we'll turn it over and let them have a go at it, and give them the raw, you know, the raw data, and, you know, let them manipulate it and see what they tease out, so, thank you.
And Steve, I would suggest that if and when we change this, we change it gradually so that the database is consistent across the number of years. Because I think it'd be more valuable after five years of data to make projections, so.
Yeah, I agree. By the way, I, I wanted to extend my gratitude to the, the people who developed this, this exit poll. And I, can you please remind me who that was?
Doug, Perry, and Glenn.
Yep, and then you were part of that effort as well, Dr. Fisher.
Yeah, I reviewed it. I, yep.
So, I, I thought it was an excellent first, first effort.
And Debbie coordinated the, getting the samples from NISBA and some of the other organizations that have done exit polls. So, she gave us all the really good samples to work with, too, so.
And the other person that I wanted to, to mention is Lori. Sorry, what's Lori's last name? Benton, who did a lot of the presentation and Excel spreadsheet work on this. I thought she did a, a great job. Okay. I accidentally closed my web browser, so I.
We're on graduation.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yes. We normally would not do graduation at a board of education meeting, but we really feel it's important to get the information out as often, as early and often, just like voting early and often, as possible, because there is this very significant change. Our graduation, due to the construction of our fields at Roosevelt High School, will take place at Haviland Middle School. The information about the plan and the traffic patterns and all the other nuances of having it at Haviland Middle School will be sent in multiple ways. First, it will be sent to all of the students with their tickets. Will be the information on how to get there. And I'll read through it, because we're actually closing some roads. We're working with the police department. We've been working on this for months. But as we all know, you can wrap the tickets inside the directions, but that does not mean that people read them. So, we've been using every opportunity we have at Roosevelt to announce it. We're going to use school messenger the day before graduation. We have the ability to send the message to parents so that they get it verbally. And we'll be posting this on the website. And we are going to have the information to, the roads affected, two roads in particular, Haviland Road residents and actually Wright Road, we are going to stuff it in their mailboxes, and we have permission somehow to do that. But, so that they, because they'll be affected on those days and they're not normally expecting to have a high school graduation and have the road closed, we felt that we would want to do everything we could to communicate with the people who live there, so.
Dr. Fisher, a quick question there.
Yeah.
There are, there's at least one dead-end road off of Haviland, and that's Idlewild. Were those residents also included in the?
I don't think so.
It might be a good idea, because there, if you're gonna close Haviland, they're completely locked out.
They're not, they're not closing the whole road, just the portion in front of Haviland.
Just the, okay, Haviland, okay.
Yeah, so, and it's. They have the option of going the other direction.
Okay.
Or going across Bill Reynolds Boulevard, and they have ways to, from what I was told.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it will be on Saturday, June twenty-second at ten AM. The school district, we're working with the Hyde Park Police Department to make sure the traffic is contained and everything runs smoothly. The police department will be closing Haviland Road between Route Nine G and Bill Reynolds Road at eight-thirty AM. The ceremony will last approximately two hours, so the road will ma, remain closed until all the cars have been dismissed approximately one PM. We're asking that all the graduation attendees and their parents and their guests enter Haviland Road via either Cream Street or Wright Avenue, depending on which direction you're coming from. If you're coming from the south, it would be Wright Avenue. If you're coming from the north, it would be Cream Street. There will be Hyde Park police officers at the Route Nine G light as well, as well as the Haviland Road Bill Reynolds intersection. And again, that is a little bit of what's going to happen. That section of the road will be closed off. There'll be police at both the intersections to help direct traffic. So, if people read the material and plan accordingly, everything will go smoothly.
So, to summarize what I just heard, you won't be able to get to Haviland from Nine G for that morning?
You won't be able to turn on the Haviland Road from Nine G.
Right.
You have to go further south.
You either have to come, come, come up from the south and turn before Haviland Road or go over to Cream Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that was still part of the superintendent's report, right?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you turn at the deli, go around the back and come out?
That's Wright Avenue.
That's Wright Avenue.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so it's only a block out of the way.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But if you're coming from the north, you're not.
Yeah, the point is, they don't want you coming from the north, taking a left into right. They want you, if you're coming from the north, to take, go out from elbow to Cream Street.
Those are the people I'm worried about.
Yeah, that's a long, it's a long.
It's a long detour.
So, if you're coming from the north, you just go south down to Joseph's and then turn around and come north.
No, because at a certain point, they're going to block the road, unless you go down Route Nine and come up St. Andrews. If you wanna.
They're gonna block Nine G?
They're gonna, they're not going to let you turn.
From Nine G to Haviland Road.
Right.
Because they're gonna block the road from, only one entrance to Haviland's gonna be open for cars.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Where, where is the parking gonna be?
The parking is all in the back and, and in the parking lot. And we'll have ample parking attendants and people giving directions for parking, and plenty of handicap parking. And part of the reason for closing Haviland Road was, and it was a collaborative effort, and we had many, many people involved, but as a safety feature with having people sitting on the front lawn, they really, the police department and everybody working on it, including our own people, felt very adamant about not having cars going where people are sitting, observing a graduation.
Has anything been given to having like a detour sign at Nine G in the mobile station saying like, "FDR graduation" with an arrow going down?
If there hasn't, I will suggest that.
Before people drive off.
Yeah, go all the way down and then have to come all the way back.
Because it's a long detour. Especially if it backs up, if you're turning onto Wright.
Especially if you're running a little late.
Exactly. Yeah, so, avoid that and let them turn.
I think I'm just gonna sleep there the night before, honestly. I just, I'm even worried about myself. So, a detour sign at Nine G in the mobile station, I think that's an excellent idea.
No, I'm off.
Or a cop or something.
Yeah, or both. Okay, so I think we're ready to move on. Mr. Kurlander, would you like to review the bond proposal?
Sure. This is actually an opening conversation for further and, and more detailed.
I'm, I'm just gonna preface, sorry, Wayne.
It's okay.
I'm just gonna preface this with, we had a commitment at the beginning of the year to bring. I'm just going to preface this with, we had a commitment at the beginning of the year to bring forward cost-saving measures to the board. And we were hoping to do so on a monthly basis. And I want to just preface this, that this is one of those efforts that Wayne did pursue to see is there any way that we could save money in this area, so, and that's why he's making this presentation, so.
Sure. And again, an opening conversation for a more detailed PowerPoint, you know, and, you know, have our professionals who are, represent the, our fiscal advisors come and give you the specific details and, you know, maybe answer more detailed questions. So what, what my goal is for this evening is to introduce it to you, what I like to turn your attention to is the, the two forms that were provided for you. And there's a, there's a little spreadsheet, and there's also a refinancing, refinancing outline. So I think if you, if you bring your attention there, we'll be able to, 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 to work you through what needs to happen. So for many years, every single year, I always review what our bonds are, what our outstanding debt is for the district and whether or not there's an opportunity to go out and refinance those debts. We've done it before in the past, and it's coming up again as an opportunity for us to be able to do it again. So if you, if you, direct your attention to this sheet, you'll see the four bonds. One's a 2002 bond, one's a 2005 bond, actually there's two 2005 bonds, and a 2006 bond, ranging from 1.8 million dollars to 10.7. With that being said, you might ask yourself, well Wayne, why didn't you just refinance the 1.8? That was callable. And what callable means is that you can pursue prepaying it down and getting a refinance at a lower rate. Well, the cost of doing that one on its own kind of mitigated itself. So now with these three other opportunities, and you'll notice that the callable dates on the 29, the 14, and the 10.7 are not callable until 2015 and 1 in 2016. So with that being said, we have this little program that we're going to talk to you about. So on the left side, this is what our gross debt service is between the years of 2014 and 2022, and the total. On the right side is the proposal that I'm going to go through on the outline. And that shows you the rate, which is, has an average coupon refunding percentage average of 4.5. If we were to refi, it would be 2.1, and that's an estimate right now. And you'll see the difference between the total on the left and the total on the right is $173,000. And approximately anywhere's between 17 and, you know, $23,000 a year savings on the annual debt service budget. So again, we've been actively pursuing this. This opportunity was made available by the comptroller because rates are very low and it might be good to, to, to get folks in the municipalities moving some of their finances in a different direction. This prepayment of his existing loans cannot occur until the call of, of the bond, as I mentioned before, and the earliest call dates, as I mentioned. So there's a unique opportunity that exists with this new comptroller's allowance or law or legal change for us to, to actually hold two notes. You're going to hold two loans. One loan would stay in escrow, and the in, the difference in interest is that great that one, that would pay off the interest of the other for a certain period of time, and you still wind up with $173,000 of savings at the end. Sounds confusing. I see puzzled looks, and it, it is confusing, and that's why I would probably want Chuck Bastian to come from Bernie Donigan's office to really give the details of how that works. There's a lot of financial, legal expertise that he holds in that area that he could, he could explain in great detail. So as of May 31st, our net estimated budgetary savings, if we were to pursue this, is, is $173,000. This process, as I mentioned, is totally governed by the state comptroller's office and allowable under our local finance law. The only concern that, that I have is the fluctuating bond market. Since I started looking at this, our treasury bond has gone up 40 basis points. So the $260,000 I had on this sheet when I started moved down to 173. So it, it, there's a little risk involved. So maybe by the time Chuck gets here on the 27th, you know, how much savings is left? Or did it go the opposite direction? So it, it could be in our favor, it could be against us, it could be for us. Our actual interest rate does not get locked in until we go to the actual pricing date. And if, if anybody knows about finance, there's, you know, 100 steps that have to take place as you're, as, as you're putting yourself towards actually accomplishing what we're trying to do. But it is an opportunity, and, and like Grace said, we always want to be researching opportunities for the district to save money and use it towards programs and kids and all the things that we're really here for. There's inherent risk that rates will continue to rise since there's a two-month span. So basically, if we agreed to resolve this at the 27th board meeting, from that point, two, two months it would take us to actually close and, and continue. So we have a two and a half month risk at hand that the bond market, or actually the treasury market will change. And it is, it does fluctuate, as we all know. So, you know, I would leave it here for a small discussion as, to really see if we have interest in, in pursuing this. And then follow it up with a resolution for the 27th, and Chuck Bastian to be here to answer, you know, more questions as we think about it through the month.
I have serious concerns. The treasury bond market is tanking at the moment. It's really bad. So at least I'd like to know what it is in another couple of weeks or by the next meeting so we see. But the trend right now is not good because most people have bonds or holding bonds, or retirees, and they're getting, they're getting wiped out. Because the, the, the interest rate, when the interest rates go up, the bond market goes down.
Yeah, yeah. What was interesting, if you notice, when Wayne first looked at it, it was such a different picture than when we sat down and actually got the charts from Chuck. So we, we have mixed feelings ourselves. One is that nothing has been lost in looking at this. And in fact, we, we, we almost, we were sitting there at the table with Chuck, and at a certain point, we're like, do we even pass this forward? And I said, yes, it's worth the conversation because Wayne spent a lot of time looking at this. And a couple of months ago, had we been there and locked in, we would have realized as considerable savings, as a savings worth pursuing. But it does seem to be the case that as each day ticks on, you know, so, so that's why it's here for discussion to say, do, do we want to spend more time on this, or is this not the time to continue to pursue it? But with all the work that was done and the fact that, you know, we really want to be diligent about looking for opportunities. So it really is a conversation. We don't want to waste Chuck's time in coming down, and really open for discussion, so.
All right, I have one comment on this whole process. Not, not this process, but the process of presenting data. It seems to me that that screen and that laptop should be a board docs lap. This is a public, in the public section. And you don't know what we're talking about. You haven't got a copy of it. Nobody else that's looking in from the community has a, a copy. And it seems to me if we're going to run a meeting on, based on board docs, there should be, it should be up there. That, that we should, when a presentation is done, it's done from the public section of the board docs thing.
Is it not? We can put it up there right now. The problem is that in the format, it's probably so tiny to see.
Well, certainly better than nothing, and you can, you can, you can up the, you can up the font size.
Okay. Got to have this side by side.
I mean, I know you have it on that laptop, but we're running the meeting based on board docs, and we should be showing the public what is in the public contact area from board docs. And then everybody's on the same.
Right.
You know, schedule here and looking at the same stuff.
I understand your point of view, and I think it's valid. But I suspect that the resolution on most televisions and the camera would make it hard to see it for the public. And I think that the font is small enough that we really ought to have slides for presentation.
I believe you'll be able to see it, and you'll be able to make it bigger. Because it goes, at least online, it goes to another fa- another tab, and it's a whole screen. Not, it's not going to appear in that little. Yeah, do the plus. Yeah, I mean.
Well, I guess it's better than nothing to have up there, you know, to.
And it's, it's more transparent, that, that, you know, we're not just, you know, looking at things here, sitting at a table and say, well, we get to see it, but nobody else does.
Right. And it, you know, just to be clear, that it is available to everybody and anybody who would want it or who can.
The other thing is that we'll make that clear is I'm sitting at home, I can go to board docs and look at the public section of board docs. And, all right, I'm, the TV is, so what is, what is that? Oh, I can go on my computer and I can go look at it. So it ties it all together.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
That's a good point, Doug.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions. Has Chuck offered any anticipated cost, or what, what's our expected cost to?
That's an excellent question, and it, it's also on the outline. All of the costs are subtracted, so the savings represents all of the.
The net savings, okay. And, and the only other thing I was, I agree, I mean, and I know that the way the bond market's going right now, that that's dwindling. And, and maybe that's just part of it, is just looking at or projecting and saying, okay, well, you know, what do we think it will be? And, and what, what's the, you know, it's basically doing some what ifs. You know, if the market continues to drop, and in two weeks it's, it's at this level, you know, what's, what's the net savings? And, yeah, it, it may have been a great exercise, it just may have been not the best timing.
Right, right. Yeah, we, we went from something that was worth sharing to, at the last look, it was what, 17,000 a year? With a little bit of risk, and are we really willing to roll the dice for 17,000 a year? It's hardly, seems.
My question would be a procedural one. If we do this on the 27th, two of us that are, that could potentially be voting for it wouldn't be here for the next roll call to actually do it. Right? We'd have to have the resolution for two weeks, but we wouldn't be actually doing it until the following, correct?
No, it, the resolution would be to just go ahead and start to look. And there are many checks and balances where you can back out of it, but no, if, if we put it on for a resolution on the 27th, that would mean you vote on it that night.
All right. And Bernie would be here to answer questions, I assume then, right? I mean, I, you know, I mean, any savings is a savings. I think you just have to, you want, I want to understand the risks better. Not that I have a vote until July 1st, but, you know, I, I would want to understand the risk. Because, you know, if, if, okay, so the savings got smaller, okay. Suddenly, oh, no, it costs more, ah, forget it, you know. You don't, I don't know if that's a scenario where you find yourself, oh, we went back out, and guess what? Now it's higher.
Two and a half months is a long time.
Yeah, you know, it's, yeah.
This market.
Yeah.
You know, nothing's certain, I guess, in life, except death and taxes, and we don't want to make the taxes worse, so.
But it's nice to know that you're looking at this type of stuff too, so.
So is, I'm sorry, Tim, I thought you were.
No, I'm just saying, you know, it was good on our administration part to go down this road and at least look at ways of saving money.
The question I have here is procedural, or technical, I suppose, but is it the case that we would commit to refinancing the bonds? And by the time the process were complete, it could in fact be more expensive? Or is it the risk of waiting to make the decision that you're referring to?
A little bit of both, because as Grace mentioned, there are safeties in, in, involved with this. And when Chuck does come, he will be able to explain the risks of the bond market a lot better than I, I will be able to, as well as, you know, what, what could potentially happen if, by running scenarios of, of, you know, if, if the bond market goes up or down and, and really be able to answer specific questions.
Would we have to pay him to come?
We have a retainer with him, so it's pretty much, he gets, he would really get paid if we went through with it. It's in his interest and, and bond council's interest and everybody, because everybody gets a, you know, there's fees involved.
He'd be the salesman.
Correct.
Yeah, but you know Chuck.
No, no, I'm not saying, just, you know, I don't know, because I see like a lot of hesitation here. Is it worth us, if we had to pay for him to come here, to say no at that point?
So we have him on retainer for all our capital projects, so anything and everything is included in that. So it's not like he would get anything more for coming here on the 27th, that's the question.
Where's he have to come from?
What's that?
Where's he have to come from?
He, he's from Rochester.
Rochester?
Yeah.
Don't we do video conferencing for stuff like that? I mean, it just seems like, you know.
It certainly could be arranged if, if the technology's available on, on his end, because I know Forrest would be able to.
You know, you hate to have to drag somebody down here for a 10-minute presentation.
He comes for multiple, I know that, I know from experience.
If he's got other business down here.
He's coming to the area, he hits his school district, he gets that school district. I mean, he, he makes pretty good use of his time when he travels. Yeah.
I would concur.
But is there any support for anything like this? I, I mean, I hate to waste time also, but I'm seeing like a lot of risk with very minimal payback to it, so.
I, I, I guess I don't fully understand all the risk. And maybe that's, and maybe that's where we need to be, and I always like to have the opportunity to talk about things before, you know. And, and even though maybe there's a slight chance that we're going to go forward with this from an educational standpoint, it might be worth having the opportunity to have Chuck explain it better to us and, you know, so that, who knows, in six months, if the economy, you know, if things change, the bond market changes, it may be something we want to do. And, and having had the experience or know that it's, you know, having better confidence in making the decision more timely might be well worth the investment.
I also think that update on the market in two weeks would really be helpful in, in swaying our, you know, decision, one way or the other, so.
Another question I have is how, how much time could it save us if we didn't have to? How far down the process of, of executing on this refinance could we go without board approval? And, and where I'm going here is, two weeks ago, or when you started looking at this, potential savings was 230,000, right? So what if you'd have started down that path then, and?
Right.
Then, then we would have granted final approval at some point where the lead time was only four weeks. Or, you know, I thi- so what I'm trying to do is, is get to the point where we're not being hobbled by bureaucracy and approvals.
I, I think by signing the resolution doesn't necessarily mean we have to go through with it, as Grace said, we're looking into it. And I think Chuck could really specifically explain where our outs are. In other words, where can we get out of the process if it just doesn't look like it's going in the right direction? So that's why we, we decided, you know, Wayne to do a small introduction, give you some of the details, show you what the potential is now versus, you know, when, when Chuck comes, he would probably do a much more detailed presentation, review, and be able to answer those questions, you know, of, you know, where in the process could we pull out if it didn't look, um, like an opportunity anymore.
Yeah.
The, the other thing I'll just add is that the final review is the comptroller's office, and that's to protect us from, let's say.
Negative.
Yeah, so, so the good news is that regardless of who our finance firm is, there's a protection at the very end from the comptroller's office. Yeah, I love that. Yeah.
Tell you no, you can't do it.
Yep, absolutely. So it keeps everybody above board because they're not going to present something, you know, because it would look, reflect really badly to have the comptroller reject it at the final end.
All right, so I think we want to move forward with.
I got one more question, I'm sorry. The resolution would be to, because now I just heard what I was talking about before, is the resolution to move forward or to actually move forward by studying it, or to actually? I got one more question, I'm sorry, the resolution would be to, because now I just heard what I was talking about before, is the resolution to move forward or to actually move forward by studying it or to actually do it?
It's to do it.
Okay, so.
To start the mechanism of doing it, yes.
So there would be another resolution in the future to pull the trigger?
You mean to back out?
No, 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 to pull, to pull the trigger.
No, no, the trigger would be pulled to start the process at the next board meeting. There are lots of exits that don't require, you can pull out or, you know, at the end the controller kicks you out, but no, the, the mechanism to begin the process would be the resolution next week. And that's an interesting point because we typically live in a world where we put resolutions on a board agenda that, you know, we want to do and pass.
To do.
And we may very well find ourselves unanimously saying no next week, but it may, if, again, if people want to move forward, it's because it's worth the education and learning about the process. And understanding that, you know what, maybe, maybe at the end of the presentation, we're all confident that we'll get seventeen thousand dollars and each year for X amount of years and it's worth the seventeen thousand dollars. So, but I, I don't think we should be afraid in this situation of putting a resolution on that we all may vote no on or it doesn't pass, which is very unusual, but I, I think that's okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
Because we, we have, in the financial world, two weeks, we have no idea what two weeks can be, so.
The other question I have is whether the resolution can be worded such that there's a threshold built into it. So, we're going to pull the trigger on this, but there's a, a large amount of uncertainty about what happens between the time we approve the resolution and the time this is finalized, so, you know, for example, we may arbitrarily decide that if we're not going to realize a total of fifty thousand dollars in savings, then we don't do it. And.
Wayne's shaking his head thinking that we could write the resolution that way.
Yeah, because it's, it's your resolution, so that would be given direction that it vaults at X point, just not worth it anymore.
All right.
So that way it doesn't look like we're voting no against our own resolution.
Yeah, yep, okay. All right, so I think that the consensus is that we should invite Chuck Bastian down to talk to us at the next board meeting. And there's, there's going to be a resolution on there that we'll discuss and, and vote on. Okay? Very good. Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
We're up to agenda item six point three, textbook adoption proposal from Kim Niesel.
Thank you, I had to switch and present statistics first because of all the talk about the exit poll survey, I was thinking about it, I think, before you said it. One of the reasons we want to adopt this textbook, it's called The Practice of Statistics, it's the fourth edition, two thousand twelve for our AP Statistics course, is because it does have a lot of hands-on activities and data exploration that includes real data. So I think it would be wonderful to even start the year out having the kids get a hold of the exit poll survey. The cost of the book is around a hundred and thirty dollars, we need sixty books for two sections of this course, it's around eight thousand dollars, which is budgeted for in the math textbook monies. The AP College Board doesn't recommend books, but they do list this textbook as an example that meets the curricular needs of the AP Stat. It's also the first book that was ever written for an AP Stat course, it's written by high school teachers for high school students. So a lot of the terms, notations, formulas and tables are consistent with the AP exam. It also, I'm not sure of the actual reading level, but the publishers say that, that the book can meet the needs of all reading levels, including English language learners, which is great for all kids. They have, offer a companion website with lots of applets and online case studies and, and more data files of real world data and the text is also aligned to the Common Core State Standard for Mathematics. The other book is the bigger one, it's called Campbell Biology, it's the ninth edition. I don't know if everybody's aware, but the AP is revamping a lot of their AP courses, this year they redid the AP Biology course. So this new book, new edition of the book actually would go along with this redesign. It's really now an inquiry-based course where kids are not just covering content, they're actually looking at biological concepts and scientific evidence that supports them and more reasoning and deeper understanding. So the book comes with a correlation from the AP College Board with the essential knowledge statements from the AP course. The College Board, again, doesn't recommend it, but it does list it as a textbook that meets the curricular needs of the course. The biggest reason, actually, that we need to adopt this is because in order for us to sign off as, as an AP Biology course and get that AP designation for kids, we must certify that we have a textbook within ten years of publication, basically. Because there's lots of changes, as you can imagine, with respect to biology. So we do currently use the sixth edition of this book, which is published in two thousand two, so this is published in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, sorry. Some of the new content, technology, microscopy, increased emphasis on global ecology like biofuels and climate change, there's been new genetics information, new findings in plant development and some state-of-the-art images on some things like brain function advances and different types of influenza strains. So a lot of new information and again, we just need to have a book that's within a decade. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do, how often do we have redesigned books? When we, you know, we have a book that we use, but we need to get a, a newer version of the same book?
Well, a textbook publisher, I think, uses a six-year cycle as their recommendation, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's always true, but the AP College Board does make you certify and sign that you have a textbook for AP Biology at least, that's within ten years of publication.
Is there an electronic version of these books?
There is, there's an ebook, the cost of the biology is about a hundred and seventy-three dollars, the ebook is about a hundred and forty. So I did look into it, the problem, I think, is the technology and not, not having a.
So it's the same, the same price, whether or not it's a book or an ebook?
Yeah, that's the rec, it's a thirty dollar difference.
Thirty dollars cheaper.
It's not as big a difference as people think it's going to be.
A one thirty, oh, I thought, mine, sorry.
One forty, it's about thirty dollars. It isn't that significant of a savings, that you, you know, many of you know that I would like to go the ebook route, but we just don't have the technology for all the kids to, to assure that they could use it.
That's exactly where I was, was going, if. It seems to me it's conceivable that if all our textbooks in the high schools, say, were ebooks and we had a significant saving such that we could provide a, a tablet, whether it's a Google tablet or, or, you know, whatever, and, you know.
From books.
Yeah, that, in the long run, that might be cheaper.
I think the savings would be only about two thousand dollars with a thirty dollar difference, so it wouldn't provide sixty tablets, but I, you know, I do agree and want to go in that direction in the future.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I'm talking about the entire curriculum for the high school, every book.
Yeah, sure, sure.
If a student had five textbooks.
No, absolutely, that would probably cover the cost, absolutely.
You know, thirty to forty dollars a textbook.
I, I think we should consider that, I, I mean, the, for one thing, kids are used to a tablet or a phone or a thing, anything, and we have to kind of go with the flow because that's what, that's the medium that they prefer.
You don't have to try to convince.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I'm on board. Yeah, we'd have to make the leap of faith.
Well, other districts have done it and it's been successful.
Yes, but we'd have to buy the technology.
I know it's a bad time, you know, it's a bad financial time, but I think we need to perhaps have a plan for sometime in the future that, that we seriously consider this, because I do believe that we'll save money, it will save money.
Right, and I think, as you know, with the tech subcommittee, we're firing up a full tech committee and that's one of the things we really want to do is, we need our new tech plan. We need a new five-year tech plan that gets us to where we want to be. And, yeah, absolutely, we're ready.
Kim, is that, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just going to add, sometimes when you do purchase it, it's usually a larger purchase, but sometimes they will throw in, you know, a CD or an online version for a limited time, so I could look into that as well. I don't think it would need another adoption because it'd be the same book, but we might be able to get a, an additional book online for a similar cost or the same cost.
I mean, I get, I get books in the library on my, on my tablet, I can read, I can read them whenever I want, I, I enjoy it, it, you know.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you, Doug.
Okay.
We just have to put together a plan.
Is that price discounted and we put books out to bid?
It's not, I just, you know, went to a, a vendor, you know, for, for a price for the board presentation, but we can look, we can look around.
I mean, and I don't think people are aware, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, one textbook, you know, so when people say, where does all the money go? And even if you are able to get a twenty percent discount or whatever, we're still talking a lot of money.
Yeah, ten thousand dollars for the AP Biology book, it's expensive.
And I think you had a good point that we're buying a two thousand eleven edition in two thousand thirteen. And if this AP is saying it's got to be within ten years, are we already buying a book that's too old or, you know, we're going to get eight years out of it?
Yeah, I did think of that as well, we sent.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like.
Why wouldn't we buy the, is there a two thousand thirteen edition or?
By the copyright, it looks like it's done every three years, which would be due next year, so are we like?
So here's the problem, we need to have a book for September and it needs to be within ten years in order to certify the course as AP. We did send Julie Middleton for a week-long AP professional development training on the new redesigned course and this was the book that is probably the most popular and that she chose. I did think about that, if you think about the textbook cycle, you know, maybe these biology books and social studies books do come, become outdated after six years, so that, you know, we will have to purchase one in less than ten years because it's copyrighted two thousand eleven. But she deemed this the best textbook around and, you know, I looked up a lot of the information on the AP College Board, who, again, doesn't recommend, but it's used by most of the syllabi that are included there.
The statistics book that went past me. Yeah. What's the boredom factor on that?
What's the what?
The boredom factor?
Oh, boredom, that's, you know, interestingly, but it does contain a lot of those hands-on activities, like I said before, and a lot of the real world data. So, you know, data like the survey, exit poll survey from, from the district, though it's not local data, it's a lot of real world data that the kids are, are going to be able to use. And again, it comes with those online case studies and also data files for larger sets of data so that kids can work with real information, so hopefully it's kind of low.
My, my experience of that is it's, it's not the, especially a course like that, it's not so much, as long as the textbook's easy to use and you can find information, I don't need to be entertained by it. I get the, the, the boredom factor is really in the instructional delivery in the classroom, that's what's important, to keep that being dry, you know. I just need something I can reference when I have to do exercises and I'm like, well, how do I do this, can I find it easily in the book? You know, I don't need wow factor and jazz, can I just find it and walk me through how I need to do it, that's what, that's important to me in a textbook.
Yeah, that's a good point, when I was in college, statistics, there were two books.
Right.
One was easy to use and the other one was great to read.
Right, yeah.
And especially in a high school AP course.
A book like that's not one you typically read, you know.
Yeah.
Math books are just. I mean, you get those assignments in, in grad school, you know, I read chapters three and four, really, I mean, who reads a, a, a statistics book like, like a fuck, you know?
I did and it didn't do much help. I thought it would help.
It's a great conversation for parties.
Yeah.
Depends on the party, depends on the party.
Statistically, nobody reads it.
So, does the, will the curriculum cover the, the entire book?
Yes, yes.
And will the data sets on the web change over time or is that going to be static?
That I don't know, that I don't know, I assume it's a data set for a particular point in time event happening and it would only change if they added more data sets.
Yeah, I, it seems like they're wasting potential if they put up a static website instead of, you know, improving the, the book by improving the website. Any more questions for Kim? Right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the close of the presentations and reports, this time I'll entertain a motion to enter public participation.
I'm moved.
Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, motion carries, is there anyone who would like to address the board? Anyone at all? Open mic. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close, public participation.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, all in favor, motion carries.
And I, I wonder if our students, if they need a signature. You've heard all of our presentations and you're certainly more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to go home and do the homework, at this point, we'd be more than happy to sign, maybe Ms. Kafka or something, so that you can.
I think you should make them get up to the podium for public participation before they sign.
Or mandatory.
So what'd you learn so far about Board of Education meetings?
A little late on that one, Tim.
They're more exciting than statistics.
Statistically speaking.
It's board meeting for a reason.
Okay.
You got a whole nother meeting to work on.
So. We're up to board discussion about the Board of Education meeting calendar for next year.
I can't make it.
Oh, you can, you just won't.
We voted you back on the island.
Somebody had a lighter.
Yeah, we're going to have a reunion tour, tour, and we'll bring back Andy Strop, oh, that's right, he's dead.
Oh, geez. Well, actually, this is something, you know, I can get in on because I'll be here next year and as will Gary, the August meetings, what's, what's the history been on that, that second meeting?
Statistically?
Yeah, statistically, what's, can we go back in the book and find out?
The, the history has been that we never had that second one and always needed one and it's usually a ten minute meeting.
To approve personnel.
Right, yeah, right, and I get, I get that, I just, I'm just wondering, does it make sense if we end up always doing it is not having it on the twenty-second and just doing everything on the twenty-ninth? But I don't know what everybody's schedules are like.
I think what we found, it was too much information to save for another week because you had, the previous meeting was the ninth.
Yeah, yeah.
They had a ton of information versus, oh, we have five more people we have to, that was the history.
Yeah, I actually wonder, are we going to have any issue with any capital payments?
Yeah, oh, by the way, when do we, when, when are we going to adopt the, when do you, when do you, when do we sign the warrants, the tax warrants? It's right around then, too, isn't it?
It's the second meeting in August.
Yeah, so you get tax warrants, too, on the twenty-ninth.
Or the twenty-second.
The second meeting in August.
Oh, the twenty-second.
Wait a minute, so the twenty-ninth is a tentative meeting, you, you mean?
He's thinking we had two meetings in August.
Yeah, we only have one.
No. Do you have the calendar in front of you?
Because there's one scheduled and one tentative meeting in August and the ten, the, the scheduled is where our second meeting of August would normally.
The fourth Thursday.
History's always been, you know, five person.
So what you're saying is that the, the tax warrant needs to be signed on the fourth Thursday of August. Okay.
Wayne, do you envision there'd be any issue with thinking about the capital projects that we've got going, are you going to get pay apps that are going to need approval? I mean, between July ninth and August twenty-second, is that two?
Our pay apps, once the contract's signed, we don't have them.
Our pay apps, which is the contract sign, we don't have them here.
They don't come to the board?
It's just on the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, the tackle warrant.
So, um, back to the tax warrants. When are they gonna be ready? It seems like they're always bef, right before Labor Day because you're, they're never really ready that much before, are they?
I thought, I thought we agreed at the twenty-second. They need to be signed on the twenty-second.
It depends on when the information comes.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. It's always waiting for...
You know, I would keep the tentative one there, um, if it needed it for other things. But for tax warrant, typically, if we have it, I think that historically, we've always had it on the fourth Thursday. So, that's always worked out well for me.
Okay.
Wayne, what about change orders that come to the board? I'm not saying that you're gonna get any this summer, but...
They, they could come. Uh, things have been really smooth so far. I mean, they, the, the majority of the excavation is complete, so, uh, absent of hitting something that we didn't expect, I think, anything could happen, so it's a good point.
Yeah, like, the only comment I had on the twenty-second is I'm involved, as you know, with the, the fair, so I'll be tied up with that, and I'll come down for the meeting. But I also don't want it to be a, you know, four-hour meeting, you know, blathering on when, you know, I have another place to be.
On the twenty-ninth?
No, the twenty-second. That, that's what I was getting at. It's like, I, you know, I wanna have a meeting...
No, it'll be a no-blathering meeting.
I wanna have a, a twenty-second, and then you find out, we have this ten meeting that, oh, we gotta come back and meet a week later. Well, then why don't we just do it all in one meeting and get it over with, you know? If we have to, you know, and, 'cause I do get, when you get close to the school year, you've got these last-minute appointments that have to be done. I understand that. So, you know, and, and the tax warrants, I'm almost willing to bet, won't be ready on the twenty-second. They're just never ready that early. It's always seems like that you're waiting for the county to get their act together so that you can put them together, so... Well, I can do that. And then the other thing, too, is if, if there's a lot of stuff on, maybe we can just move the agenda around. I can vote and then take off. But, you know, we can figure it out. That's my only comment on that. It's a tough time of year.
As we get closer, perhaps we can...
Yeah.
Try to consolidate those two meetings into one.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, if it, if, looking at the agenda, um, we're not hyperventilating that we need to pull everybody together because we have so much...
So much material, yeah.
Then maybe we'll just send out the notice that, you know, we're gonna do one meeting on the twenty-ninth, and it's not gonna be twelve hours long.
Does it make sense to make the twenty-ninth the meeting and the, the one on the twenty-second the, the tentative?
From a personnel perspective, that makes a lot of sense. Gives us that little bit of extra time for last-minute hires.
Okay.
I'm here, yep. The twenty, twenty-second I'm not here, twenty-ninth I am.
Well, then maybe that's just better all around then.
Yeah.
Because you're probably not gonna wanna do tax warrants unless you're here anyway.
Right.
Okay, so, let's change the, uh, the twenty-ninth to the scheduled meeting and the twenty-second to the tentative meeting?
Okay.
The twenty-ninth unavailable for me. Which is the proposed, one was proposed.
Right, does that mean you're now available on that date?
No, the mediation is, one of the days is the twenty-ninth. I already said I couldn't go to the twenty-ninth because I thought there might be a meeting.
Is that why you said you couldn't go?
Yeah.
Oh.
And if we have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, we're certainly not gonna have that session on the same day, but...
Mr. Heater, can you use the microphone?
No. Yeah.
The four that were offered.
But, and the thirtieth you can't?
So there's a, there's a possible conflict on the twenty-ninth. Is that the, the issue? And it's with another school board issue?
I think there were three other dates suggested, though.
There were September dates. I was trying to get at least one meeting over the summer. And I'm not crazy about a Friday one.
Could we do a Friday, could we do it earlier in the day on Friday?
Well...
I don't think that the, the people at home can hear anybody at that table because nobody's using the mic.
Okay. So Perry and Doug, are you available on the thirtieth, then?
Yes.
I can make myself.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
It was, I think it's earlier in the week that I'm gonna be away, but...
Okay, so we'll look to maybe starting that one earlier on the thirtieth.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would propose that if we could do that in the afternoon on the thirtieth, I'd make myself available. Who else do we have?
Glenn.
Glenn. He's, he's probably, maybe a tougher schedule to work with, but...
Right.
Ooh, that's awfully generous, though. That's leading into Labor Day.
Ooh, that's true. That's the Friday. That's a good point.
I know, it's a Fri-, yeah.
Friday for Labor Day?
Okay, well, we'll just go back to the drawing boards. That means no summer meeting for this purpose. And we look at those September dates, so, uh...
Would we wanna do...
One of which is my wife's birthday, by the way. You're really trying to kill me.
Would we wanna do the afternoon of the twenty-ninth? You know?
Live to go late.
No.
No, but before the board meeting?
Yeah, like a one o'clock. Do a one o'clock on the twenty-ninth and then...
Then you would just have to know that Glenn would more than likely not be able to make it. And how does... But if we wanted to get a meeting in over the summer, we would say one o'clock on the twenty-ninth, and we'll catch up with Glenn. There's very little that we do at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So the twenty-ninth, that, one, we'll throw it out there. They haven't even sent these to the other, so, okay, I'll send it in tomorrow, and we'll go from there.
You gotta even find if the other parties are even available.
Right.
Yeah.
Like all these dates and, yeah.
Just to be clear, on this calendar, we're having one meeting on August twenty-ninth.
No. We are scheduling the meeting for the twenty-ninth. We're reserving a positive, I'm sorry, possible tentative meeting on the twenty-second.
You're just reversing.
Placeholder on the twenty-second.
Okay.
So in other words, if stuff's really backing up how the meeting on the twenty...
Yeah, if there's something urgent.
We're having separation anxiety.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's, uh, what, five, six weeks? Between meetings?
Something tells me I bet they function real well without us, though, for a couple of weeks.
It's called summer break. For, for everybody, yeah.
In March, there's a tentative meeting on the twentieth. That would be three meetings in a row, and I just wanted to draw people's attention to that. Typically, March can be a hectic month because we're working on the budget.
Is that why that third one's plugged in there?
Yeah, that's what that tentative meeting is. A Monday meeting in May is the vote.
Budget hearing on the twelfth, yep.
Pardon? Okay. Budget hearing. And the votes on the...
Twentieth.
Okay. So something that isn't directly addressed here, and I wanted to, uh, start the conversation about, is, uh, the location of the meetings. Typically, they'll move from, uh, building to building, school to school, when they're not at the administration office. I think that there's a certain amount of, uh, extra effort that the staff has to put forward to make that work. And I am unconvinced of the value. I think that some of the value of declaring a board meeting to be for a specific school, so, you know, focusing on FDR, focusing on North Park, focusing on Violet Avenue, can still be replicated regardless of the meeting location. I think that we have a good meeting space in Ha, in, uh, Hyde Park Elementary. And that if we could leave the equipment there, possibly leave it set up, that it would reduce the effort required from our, our staff to prepare for these board meetings. So, I just wanted to throw that idea out there. I know it's been kicked around several times. So, we don't, we can't decide it tonight. That obviously gets, um, decided the first meeting in July at the reorg meeting.
Yeah, we set...
That's right.
I'd, I'd be interested in hearing from the building principals as to what their thoughts are of, you know, having us in their buildings, and if they see that as a positive or, or, you know, as a headache. You know, hopefully, we can get an honest feedback from them, you know?
The, the other option is that it's neither. It's neutral.
And, and that could be, too. I mean, that could be, too, and, uh...
Well, I, I, I'm gonna venture to say that, um, for some of our buildings, you know, and I, I think we need to be clear about why we would wanna stay stationary and what the value is of going to the buildings. But in, um, some of the buildings, they, you know, they spend that extra effort doling the building up in the hopes that it would be recognized, and there's a lot of student work displayed. And, um, teachers are more apt to come out to the board meeting when it's in their building. I don't know why. It's just psychological, but it is. Certainly, at Violet Avenue, there's a whole culture of, uh, the whole staff coming, having dinner together before the meeting, baking for the board. North Park, they bake for the board, people come out. So, um, I know that, uh, but one of the things to consider, that we were considering, is, um, the, uh, the extra time and effort to move all of this technology around every month. And is there a way to still be able to, you know, have a visit to a building and not move all of the technology and do that setup? The other thing that I know Steve had mentioned, and we've all kicked around a couple of times, too, is to be able to have, um, the board agenda on a screen, um, at the board meeting at all times so that you can have your presentation screen and the board agenda up. And in order to have that kind of a, a presentation center, um, then you need to be stationary. I, I worked in a district where we had all of our board meetings in the CPR room. And, uh, there were a lot of jokes about why it was called the CPR room, but, um, it had something to do with presentation room. But it was designed in such a way that, um, the technology for the board meeting and for the presentation was available at all times. And, um, that is something that we lose in moving, um, from building to building. So I think there's two things. There's, what's the value of, of having that opportunity for the buildings to show their pride and look at student work? Is one, that's why we do that. And then the other, eh, the other, the other side of that coin is, um, do we want to have a situation where we have a board meeting that is consistently and technologically set up with ease? Um, and, and not a strain on, um, our facilities and operations department?
Greer, I kinda see a, a hybrid possibility where, um, right now, some schools are at a disadvantage because they go, we go early in the, in the school year, so you don't have a lot of information for us. I would say the last six meetings, we visit the schools. And all the, the meetings before that is done in one location. This way, you're not setting, you know, setting up, breaking down to come here to go somewhere else the following week. Once it's broken down, one school, it could be set up in the other school.
Oh, I see.
Tim, you should be late to more meetings.
I, I always have these great ideas when I'm late.
I, I've got, um, you know, two thoughts on this. Well, first of all, that, that, the tours of the schools, you know, education law actually requires that a Board of Education inspect each schoolhouse. That's actually exactly what it says in education law.
Kevin, I, I, I'll just say that, um, when I started, that was one of the first things I did because the district had stopped, we were, we were going to the buildings, but nobody was touring them. So for the last three years, we do a district tour, the board does, before school opening.
Yeah, so that's what I meant. That was what the purpose was.
Right. That was the original purpose.
Right. You could say, I got my visit in, and it's also because it was at a regular board time. You didn't get into this, this scenario where, well, the tour's offered, and it, you know, I don't know when it's offered, but, you know, it's only offered during the day, so you gotta take off from work to hit it. You know, that, it, you, it was just part of your responsibility of showing up at a board meeting in the evening. You, you kinda got the, the tour.
Yeah. And what they lost was the inspection. They weren't inspecting, they were just having the board meeting at the building, but there was no walkthrough. The intent of the law was that the buildings be inspected prior to the opening of school. So, uh, my very first summer here, I reinstated that. We actually had some...
That's a good idea.
Nice, uh, tours of the building.
Right, right.
So...
The, the other, um...
Buildings, all of them.
Yeah, the, the, because, um, oh, when we, when, you know, when I was on the board back in the, the, you know, ten years ago or whatever, that, we were doing the tours, and then it must've fallen by the wayside because that was like, you know, we might have an exec session at the beginning, and then like six-thirty, stop, hard stop, and then it's a walking tour of the building. And, you know, we, we trooped around and looked at everything and then, then settled in. And the public was allowed to accompany us. If anybody was there and wanted to tag along, they were certainly welcome to do so. And then by seven o'clock, we were settling in the cafeteria or wherever we were meeting. So, that was my view of it. I, I, you know, but I also, having said that, I also agree with a nice boardroom-type setup. I know we're a public board, and I know, you know, but, you know, and it means that we're, you know, I, I, I'm not a big fan of the stage setup. You know, we are, we are a, a board that needs to meet in public, but not, you know, we're not on display. You know, I, I, this is a nice setup. I like being able to look over and see Doug and Cora and Aviva and Perry, you know? I don't like the day a setup, you know, which you kind, it sorta happens in the schools because you end up on a stage, and it's like, what'd you say? You're looking down, you know, like, look at the Hyde Park Town Board as an example. That's a dreadful setup. If you're a board that's supposed to be meeting together, you should be at a table looking around at each other. And, and the meeting has to be in public and on display for the public, but it's not a performance for the public. And a lot of people forget that. And then before you know it, because of the way you're set up, you're preaching to the public. No, you're supposed to be talking amongst each other, and the public's the, the fly on the wall, so to speak, observing your proceedings. So I kind of, I do like the idea of a stationary setup that's probably more conducive to that atmosphere and, and maybe allow for technology to allow to have a good board meeting. So, I could go either way with it. But I, we just, I don't wanna lose track of us not hitting each building, you know?
No, and, and Kevin, it's really important to me because regardless of where we land on this, um, I feel very strongly that, um, that prior to the opening in school, I always schedule a tour of the buildings, and many of the board members can make it, not all. But I, I don't know why. It's just some old-school thing in me. I've never worked in a district where you didn't do the tour of the buildings just prior to opening. So, right. And I, 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 regardless of where we land on this, I'll still schedule a tour of the buildings because I, I...
You know, it's, it's a good idea.
I, I, I like that.
Yeah, I do, too.
I, I think that's critical, especially, uh, when you've been doing capital work during the summer in different buildings. So, you get there to see what's been accomplished and if it has been accomplished well enough, so... The thing about the, uh, going to the schools for meetings, my past job, we ran into the same concern that Kevin had, was you're sitting, you're like you're above people, and...
Right.
It's sort of like a production. What we did, we just put everybody in front of the stage, you know, the, the setting here. And it seemed to work well.
And that's, that's what we've been doing.
And the other thing is you've, you've got more seating capacity for, for the public, especially if you go to a high school or something, you'd probably get more students, you know?
Maybe. Last time we were at the high school...
Depends on what's on the agenda, I guess.
The, the only other thing I would say, too, as far as, um, and we all know this, we've all been through it, you, you have to recognize what's coming on the agenda. And a lot of times, we're gonna know when the world's gonna come out, and you have to adjust for that. Because like, for example, this is not the room to have one of those meetings in. You got something very controversial or very, you know, a topic that's just gonna really draw the public out, you, you better be ready to move someplace that's gonna accommodate the public. You know, that, that's the only thing. You have to be ready for that, too. And HPE might be that place, although if it's really big, maybe not. You know, maybe it's the high school or Havelin, depending on the scenario.
Yep. Good. Is there any further conversation about the, uh, tentative agenda? I'm sorry, tentative calendar? One thing that I would like to ask, um, or, or, okay. One thing that I would like to see is, um, a meeting notice to all of the people at this table on, uh, our Google calendars to mark the, uh, the board meetings, just to put it on our calendars. I'm getting blank stares, so let me explain. I'm getting blank stares, so let me explain. Yeah, so, so we're using Google products for our email. And one of, one part of that is, is calendar, Google Calendar. And you can manage a group meeting by saying an invitation to everybody. Some of the meetings, such as technology, has already been managed through Google Calendar invitations. I'm just suggesting that the public board meetings be done that way as well.
Ken, is there a way to sync Google Calendar with Outlook? Because I don't use Google Cal, I don't use the, the Google Calendar. I'm an Outlook. My, my world is, everything's on Outlook. So I mean, my, my plan will be I'll, once we adopt this calendar.
I'll plug it in.
I'll just go and plug it into my Outlook calendar.
I believe that it is possible.
Okay.
I think that there may be some software that we don't currently have that would be required to do that. But if.
Sounds like we've got at least two people would be interested in.
So I, I think that would be a question for Forrest.
Yeah, my master calendar is my work calendar and it syncs with my iPad, my phone, my iPhone and my Outlook on my desk, so.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's already doing that because when I go back to my Outlook calendar, everything's there.
Oh, okay, good. You probably just have to give.
I'm not even doing anything and it's.
Have to give you the email address.
Right. Right, when we go back to our, our Groupwise, oh, was that, I'm sorry. I never, I never in my life heard of Groupwise till I came here. I was just thinking it was Outlook, sorry. Sorry, scratch that.
Well, I think that that can be managed by simply redirecting the invitations to a different email address.
Yeah, that may be the other thing is if, if they're presented as an invitation, I mean, if you can send me an invitation, it's there, sure.
Okay. Good enough.
Yep.
Unless there's further conversation, I think what I'd like to move on. This time I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda as described on the agenda.
So moved.
Sorry, I've been brought to my attention that I missed an item. So we're actually on unfinished business. Although I'm a little curious why that's in front of the consent agenda. But that's a different matter. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Board Policies 5300 dot 10, 5300 dot 50, 5300 dot 65, and 53 dot 70.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just have one question. So number, item number 10, right after this one, is you have a public hearing on it. So what, you have the hearing after you adopt it?
So the reasoning for that is that a public hearing is, you know, a better word for it would be public procl-.
Right. We've done it. Here it is. Okay. I just wanted to understand that. Okay. So you're not releasing comment?
That's right.
There was an open comment period. We had it on the agenda. It's kind of like the budget hearing.
Right, okay, okay.
So one.
It's not kind of like, it is exactly the same setup as the budget hearing.
One thing that I would like to mention is that the public document or the public copy of this was revised immediately before the meeting so that it refers to the front office of the buildings instead of the principal's office. And that's in reference to where visitors to the off, to the building need to sign in and make themselves known. So the, the exact language has been modified from what's currently on board docs. Is that clear? Okay. Any further conversation or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time we'll have a public hearing on the code of conduct.
I feel like I should say something about.
Yeah, yeah. That might have been a pregnant silence.
So the code of conduct does have to be reviewed and revised every year. In, in the last couple of years, we've really had additions to it, but even if there weren't changes, it still has to get reviewed and have a public hearing every year. The timeliness is about getting in handbooks, you know, for, for the schools. And in this case, most of the changes we made, there were some that, like the discipline for students with disabilities just had to do with, there were some definitions of infractions that happened to be sitting in that section as if it pertained only to students with disabilities. So we just moved those. So that was the only change there. And visitors to the schools, you know, after Sandy Hook, there were some recommended changes and changes we wanted to make to make it just a little less accessible to come into our schools. Thank you. And then, I'm sorry, bullying and harassment every time that that gets updated in some way, the dignity act, that pertains to the code as well. Everybody here?
All right. Seeing as there's no further discussion, I'll accept a motion to, for the consent agenda as described in the agenda.
So moved. Don't we have to close?
Yeah, you have to close.
Do we have to close the?
The public hearing.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't an open discussion. It was.
Oh.
It was the board discussion, right?
No, it was a public hearing. For, that's why we have to.
The public was.
Yeah, but we opened it, we have to close it.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was there a motion to open?
There was.
Is there discussion on the motion to close?
Nope.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, does anyone have an objection? To move resolution about the consent agenda at this time? Seeing as there's no opposition, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Onto new business. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve and arrange special education placements as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the consultant agreements for special education services.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining?
I'm sorry. I had a question with Marbelle and their issues about if they were going to continue to go for the swimming since they're looking at a contingency budget.
Okay.
Yes, as of right now, yes. We anticipate that.
So the motion carries with one abstention. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the terms and conditions of employment for confidential and managerial staff.
So moved. Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I would like to point out in the public section of board docs, the document exists if anybody wants to look at it. I still think we could be having it open. If we do have a permanent site, that'll make me happy. So that's good.
Yeah, because Doug, the concept of having the permanent site is to have one screen for presentation and to have the whole agenda visible the whole time and open up all the documents.
Works for me.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll accept a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 6830 and 4321 dot four dash R.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the settlement and general release agreement as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to abolish a teaching position as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve a bond resolution as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Has to be ruled on, right?
You're good, Tim.
Good catch, Mr. Lee Brand.
You know what? It's that, that light bulb that burns brightest before it goes out.
Mr. Heater?
Aye.
Ms. Lee Brand?
Aye.
Ms. Mattias?
Aye.
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 This time I'll entertain a motion to re-enter public participation.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Motion carries. Would anyone like to address the board? Anyone at all? Even the cameraman?
He's coming.
Oh.
He has to, you know, zoom in on himself. He's not even there.
Very dapper too, you notice?
I had to get my good side. Good evening, Steve Hughes, District President. A couple of comments about the board meeting locations. One, going way back, one of the purposes of going to the various school buildings was to meet with the staff and, you know, discuss their issues, their, you know, agendas, things like that. For various reasons, political personalities and just human nature, that didn't work well. I think it, it was a good intent and it would be something valuable to do, but I'm not sure there is a reasonable way to accomplish that. The other comment with respect to having a, a single meeting room is that you can get better audio visual equipment with regard to recording the meetings. One of the advantages of town hall is there are three permanently mounted cameras, remote controls. So for example, one of those cameras could be trained on the agenda screen. You wouldn't get a lot of the panning that I'm, panning and zooming that I'm forced to do with a single camera. I think that's a easier viewing result and it also conveys the information better to the people trying to watch it at home. So just another thing to keep in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation? This time I'll entertain a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Would anyone like to address or respond to Mr. Hughes?
Excuse me. As Mr. Hughes remembers, the meet the staff was a great idea. And unfortunately, politics got involved, both from like a management employee type, I don't want to say anything in front of my manager. I don't want to say anything in front of my union rep. I don't want to say anything that, you know, it's going to get me ostracized with my fellow employees. So the culture wasn't ready for that. I would, I wouldn't mind trying it again, to try and get some feedback from. I know that when I go to a school, like I go to Violet Avenue, I, I haven't gotten to know the staff there. And it's, you know, and I know more about how that building works. And it's a good thing for me. And I think if we could all get some level of understanding of the problems they face, the conditions they might have, whatever, that that's useful to us. However, it won't be useful if they're afraid to talk to us. And that's where it fell apart last time. So you might want to ask the principals, poll their buildings to see if that's something that they want to do and go from there.
I think the idea has merit. I think the idea can be separated from the location of the meeting itself. So I think they should be considered independently. Okay. Board Subcommittee Reports? The tech Subcommittee met and we discussed several items. A lot of discussion about the website and some considerations about perhaps changing the temp, the underlying template that's used for that website. Just to better meet common expectations as well as just make it a little more user friendly. Something else we talked about was the possibility of increasing the security surrounding email, requiring multiple factor logins, especially for perhaps board members and upper, upper administration. Just because of the, the possible security violations or, or the ramifications of, of loss of information. And we also started to, the process of looking at the recommendations of an auditor, internal auditor?
No, external.
Right.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Right. Yeah, but the, the recommendations had to do with privileges on computer systems.
Yeah.
So. Any other Subcommittee Reports?
The Facilities Committee met and I think Wayne and the FNO Department have, I mean, they've put together a great list. I mean, the, the committee's been working and I mean, there's been a lot of people involved in, in developing what I think is, has the potential of being a, a great list for future improvements throughout the district. It's, it's, it's a work in progress, I guess, is what I would say. And then also the Dutchess County School Board Association had their annual meeting earlier this month. New slate of officers, many of them returning. I have taken on the position of the legislative representative, which I don't fully understand what that means yet, but.
You get to go to Albany.
I get to go to Albany. Yeah, okay. And we are, I don't want to say pursuing, but certainly getting more information at my expense. For DHIQ. One of the things that the School Board Association is working on is getting better transparency with DHIQ and, and what's happening there. And, you know, I think that there's going to be some very interesting dialogue there in the future. And at some point, I think there will be an invitation to all board members perhaps to attend a, a forum for discussion. And I think that there's also a fair amount of interest in looking at BOSI's and just how better to make BOSI's a, you know, the best investment that we can for, for this district and other districts. So it's kind of a couple of, I think, fairly ambitious efforts and it'll be interesting to see what happens.
I saw in a paper that BOSI's is not offering two courses. Did we have any, not that you would know, did we have anybody in these courses? Like first year going into second year that now don't have a second year to go to?
You know, I, we had some waiting list conversations, but I, I don't think that we do that once there's a commitment in year one to year two. Not that I've heard.
Well, I know like a lot of programs have like two years. I want to make sure that we don't have, not that we could do anything about it. As somebody who, who completed year one and where normally they would go to year two, and now there's no year two for them to go to.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that I don't know.
Good question. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I could see him eliminating a program, but you let those who were in it finish it, you know.
Yeah.
I would imagine they would leave somebody stranded.
Year one.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's what it looks like in the paper. It's like, it's no more.
Right.
Can I, it's just, I forgot to say this earlier in the meeting and you just, BOSI's, like, do you know that for the third year in a row of FDR? Can I, it's just, I forgot to say this earlier in the meeting and you just, BOSI's, like, do you know that for the third year in a row of FDR student is the valedictorian?
Valedictorian and the salutatorian and we've asked that they are up on the stage at graduation with the, yeah.
Oh, good, that's good.
Third year in a row.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was the third year in a row. Yeah, they, they definitely deserve a lot of recognition and I know at the, at their graduation ceremony, I could not attend, but the high school administration was there.
We're just talking about, um, graduation since it was brought up. Since this is going to be the first year we're going to be graduating our seniors at Havlin, which was the old high school a million years ago. Have we thought about tying that in somehow historically? It may be way too late to do anything with it.
I know Steve's working on his speech, so, no.
Back when I would graduate.
That's a good question. What was the last class that graduated?
Nineteen sixty-five.
Nineteen sixty-five.
I-
That was only slightly before me.
No, I mean, it'd be, it'd be kind of interesting to see, like have somebody from historical society there or some, I, I don't know. It's just, and they're not going to be there again for many, many years, but it's going back to the roots.
It's a novel idea.
Yeah.
I can include that in my comments if no one else has, I can definitely do that and-
We should have the valedictorian of the nineteen fifty-five class.
Sixty-five, sixty.
Well, I mean, I am-
You graduated in sixty-five?
No. I am surprised at the number of people that tell me they were the first class to enter that school building or exit or, you know, there are quite a number of our community members that are still with us.
It has to be something interesting to-
Yeah.
To tie the, the two buildings together somehow.
Yeah, I know, I was, I saw John Golden when he came in to vote, uh, at the budget vote and he said he was the first, um, class entering that building when it was built and got to play the first basketball game, play in the first basketball game.
I believe he's proud of the fact he was the first student to be sent to the principal's office.
For carving in his desk, yes.
I just, this could be a use for the Facebook.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So what should I say?
How many graduates of sixty-five?
How many graduates nineteen sixty-five at Havlin, at the high school?
At the, and there's a, there's a-
Contact us.
There's a Facebook group called Hyde Park Back in Time. That's the place to go to probably drop that one.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people from that era, sixties and seventies are posting, you know, I see a lot of posts from them. Subcommittee's, audit, Subcommittee met on Tuesday, you know, met with the external auditor to get them off and running. And, you know, so that they, they were, you know, they laid out their schedule and they're ready to go. So, now, they have a, a good schedule so that they will be ready to, you know, present to the board early enough so that we can adopt and get it shipped to Albany when it's due. And then just as a, as a note to the board members that were not present, or really even, even employees, but it's really particularly for the board as the governance body, you know, they always put the invitation out that, you know, they asked us in the meeting and we sat there and said, you know, nothing, because I don't think there is any. But certainly if anybody is concerned about something or suspects there's fraud or something that, you know, you can reach out to them and, and get them on their way to that, that, that's just something you do as part of governance that they, they have to make that invitation and make, you know, make you aware that, you know, if you're aware of something that you pick up the phone and call them and drop the dime, but not saying that that there is, I'm just, but I have to extend that invitation.
Okay.
And then the last part I'll say about the audit committee is now that I'm here, or soon to be here, we probably need to start seeking another community member or two for that committee, because we're going to be down to one now. So.
Right, we'll also-
So I might, I change status.
We'll have four.
And we'll also have four people, because all, all, you know, you threw three people that will return to the board in July and then myself joining, so, you know, we'll have to address that as well, but that's it for the audit committee.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming meetings, of course.
I forgot to report under superintendent's report and it's not a subcommittee, but we did have the superintendent's roundtable on June sixth. I was very happy Steve was there in attendance as well. And we had about seven or eight community members who came and gave us feedback and we're going to just kind of summarize that and share it with them and I'll post it on the superintendent's page.
Good, it was a little hard to contain the amount of time that took. It was a good conversation.
I'm, I'm not sure if this is the, the appropriate time, but I'll go anyway. The, um, last year I had the pleasure of going to some of the training that's required for new board members. And as I was there, I noticed other districts who had their entire board there, you know, new and old. And I thought, you know, that there seemed to make some good sense that, you know, is there, you know, does anybody else think that there might be a value in a group and maybe the entire board going to some of these trainings together? Just as a refresher and looking at governance and responsibility of, of board and it might, you know, just be a way of refreshing and, and looking at, okay, what's our responsibility and, you know, what we should be doing.
I just finished my training over in Orange, all Strobo's. It was probably about, there were forty attendees, but they were all rookies.
They were all rookies, yeah.
We, we're still members of the School Association, correct, New York State? Yeah, I, you know, that, they always have that meeting at the, I don't know, when is it, early September up in Albany? And they kind of have a, they do something, I don't know if they still do it. It usually was a weekend, it was like a, you know.
Yeah, there was one.
Yeah, and there's one for, you know, new board members, there's one for-
Trying to combine all the stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they combine the training as well as-
It's just a lot of, I mean, a lot of good information, a lot of good things to think about and, and a lot of, um, opportunity to meet other board members across the state.
Yeah, some good networking.
Yeah, good networking and a lot, I mean, you realize that, you know, you think we got problems, I mean, what goes on in some other places and it, it's, I always found it valuable. What was the one, remember Doug, you and myself, Steve, we went with Carol, remember? What was that? Was that the same thing? That was at the, was it the Desmond or was it somewhere in Albany? I think that one was just a day, but, you know, they're just always, always good meetings, so that's something that we, we probably ought to think about.
I think the idea has merit. I think it's something that we should put on an agenda during the summer to discuss.
Yeah, just look at the calendar and see when they're offered and-
What's there.
Okay, good idea. Okay, upcoming meetings. Graduation is at Havlin Middle School, a week from Saturday at ten AM. And the next Board of Ed meeting is here on June twenty-seventh at seven PM. There is no need for a second executive session. At this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're adjourned.